Can I call to order, please? I'm going to call to order the Swampscott School Committee Regular Session dated May 22nd. If anybody who... Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone signed up? Ms. Maltz, where are you? I see you back there. Want to come down?
Sandy, you'd better not be talking about the same thing I am. No kidding.[69.73][69.73][laughter] You're on my superintendent's report.
Oh, well...
You should.
Yes, of course you should.
Of course you should speak.
Okay. My name is Sandy Maltz. I'm the librarian.
Just pull it down.
I'm the librarian at the middle school. And I came in support of the high school librarian's position. First of all, I think everybody knows that a good library is the heart of a school. And a blue-ribboned school deserves to have a librarian, a staffed library. And there is research, which I don't have with me, that proves that having a professional librarian, a school librarian, actually affects test results, like standardized test results, and the tests that the students take to get into college. And so at the high school level, that's very important. Also, recently, the state has mandated civics as a part of the curriculum. And I think that librarians, especially as we're teaching a lot of courses on media literacy, I teach three different courses on that at the middle school level, that librarians are well-suited to talk about things like critical thinking, judging sources, these are subjects that will affect kids for the rest of their life. That's what I always tell them. If you become a critical thinker, that's a skill for the rest of your life. And I think that that's something a librarian can bring to a school. So, anyway, I just hope that you'll think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you.[169.15][169.15][applause] Okay, so, something sounds weird. So, we're going to move into... First of all, I have to say, it's so exciting to hear all this energy in the audience. It's not something we usually have, especially with all of the young students. It feels like we're in school. So, we're going to move into "For the Love of Learning," where different groups come before us to highlight some of the great things that are going on in our schools. And tonight, we have Ms. Erin Delicio from Stanley School. If you want to come on up and bring your group.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Delicio. And recently, the first graders went back in time to explore some cave art. And we have here tonight Logan, Sophia, Tess, Banner, Lucy, and Jackson, all from Stanley Elementary School. And we're going to tell you about our studies. First, we had to build a working time machine. And time machines are powered by imagination. So, first grade is the best grade to build a time machine. So, each student had a control panel. And we learned about tints and shades when we painted them. And then they have all kinds of buttons and levers. They do all kinds of different jobs on the ship. The art classroom was actually, like, the whole machine. And the whole art classroom went back in time. We also studied and researched, you know, the time period we were going to. We looked at the cave paintings of Lascaux in France, about 17,000 years old. We learned about the colors the cave people used, the animals they drew, the symbols they drew. We watched some videos and looked at photos and all that. We practiced our own cave art. And now, we're going to simulate how the time machine works. Now, this is just a test. It's just a simulation. I don't have enough first graders here tonight to get this thing powered up for real. So, you don't have to worry. We're safe in 2019. It's just a test, okay? So, places, children. Okay. Okay, y'all ready? All right. Logan, engine one.
I'm done.
Lucy, activate the shields.
I'm on the cabin.
Sophia, guide lights.
Go.
Banner, laser guidance.
Activating.
Jackson, extreme-o rockets fire when ready.
Fire.[396.31][396.31][laughter]
Tess, flux capacitor.
Last stop.
Five, four, three, two, one.
When we landed in 15,000 B.C., we got off of our ship, which landed in a dark cave. We could hear water dripping, and there was a campfire still burning.
There was animal art all over the rock walls of the cave in natural colors like brown, red, and black. The cave people had to make their own paint pigments using natural materials from their environment.
Ms. Delicio kept shushing and telling us to be quiet because she wasn't sure when the people would be back to their site. So, we certainly did not want to mess with space-time continuum and change history by accident, so we stayed quiet as she requested.
We did, however, add some art to their cave walls. We drew pictures of the animals and symbols like the ones we practiced in art before our trip.
We safely landed, walked back onto our ship with Ms. Delicio, and took back off for 2019 again, home sweet home.
The mission was awesome. When we came back, we debriefed and wrote up reports to give to headquarters. You can see mine here.
So, that was our time travel experience in a nutshell. We hope you enjoyed our presentation and look forward to shaping our own future in a way that builds upon what we have learned from the past.
Thank you.[535.41][535.41][applause] Good job. Good job.
You guys are awesome. I'm sort of bummed you didn't bring enough first graders to actually time travel. Was it, like, fun or super scary?
Fun.
I have a question about your cave art. Can someone tell me what materials did you use for your cave art? Tess?
We used cardboard and scrap.
I couldn't tell if it was crayons or paint or chalk?
Like, we used this chalk powder that we put in water.
Ah, that's why. Very cool. What was more fun, making the control panel or making the cave drawings?
Cave drawings.
Which one?
Control. Cave drawings.
Like, sort of half and half, huh? That was awesome.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to ask any questions since we have these time travelers here?
Extra points for the word "dewey" too.
Thank you.
Great job.
Awesome job, guys.[617.24][617.24][applause]
Oh, cute. Oh, Ms. Delicio.
I want a first grader so bad. No, you don't. Yes, I do.[632.48][632.48][laughter] Not my own necessarily.
Mrs. Delicio, thank you very much.
That's so cute.
Well, now, we're back to 2019.
I know.[656.54][656.54][laughter] Bummer. You guys remember being that small? That's awesome.
So, next up, we have the Robotics Club, which we're really excited about. And I know... Sorry, the Robotics Team. And I know that there's one person in particular. I'm going to assume it's you. Why don't you come on down and introduce yourself and take it away.
We'll be able to see the video. Okay.
Hey, so, I'm Doug Dwyer. I'm one of the co-captains on the Robotics Team. I'm the programming lead. And I also, this year, acted as the team organizer. So, with the help of my teammates, we've put together just a little video about our season, what we do, and our achievements this year, which are quite, even to me, quite amazing.
They're phenomenal. You guys made us all so very proud. You got a round of applause at Town Meeting Monday night.
Yes.
Oh, really? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Just let... Go.
We are the 4311 Swampscott Hearts, the Swampscott High School Robotics Team. Every year, our group of dedicated members participate in first robotic competition, an international challenge where we construct the bot to play an unusually changing game. The 2019 challenge was to design a robot to play discs on rocky ship balls and then move balls into the ships. After a strenuous build season, we finished our robot, christening him Little Mr. Pete.
Wow.
That's awesome.
With him, we did incredibly well, qualified to go to the New England District Championships for the first time ever. There, we made it to finals, coming in second place out of 64 teams. We ended ranking 18th out of 203 teams in our district, and subsequently headed to the first world championship in Detroit. Thanks to the extensive support from our community, we were able to overcome our financial barriers and take Little Mr. Pete to internationals. Everyone on the team had an amazing time. And we proved individually as well as together. This season has been an incredible experience. Everyone on the team has earned a massive amount. We brought our second-place trophy back to Swampscott. And most important of all, over the last few months, we've become like a family. We'd like to thank all of our supporters this year, including our community and our sponsors. Also, we would like to recognize the teachers and mentors who worked so unconceivably hard to make this season happen, including Randy Wilbur, Christopher Crocker, Paul Woodley, Sam Aliassini, and Michael Reardon. Thank you all, and we'll see you next season.[878.14][878.14][applause]
I just want to say I have goosebumps watching this. But it was even more entertaining to watch the live feed.
Oh, my God.
I had it going, working on one computer, and had it... Working on one and had the live feed going at the other. We couldn't, as a district and a school system, be more proud of the work you kids put in, how far you made it. Every time, you know, I got... Mrs. Wilbur updated me on where you were at. I met with Mr. Crocker and Ms. Wilbur when they said, "There's a potential we could go to Worlds, but we're not really sure. Can we have all these things in place just in case?" So, you kids worked tirelessly. So did your advisors and your supporters and your parents, who stepped up at the last minute to head to Detroit. So, congratulations. I'm so, so very proud of all of you.
You made the whole community proud.
Thank you very much.[938.02][938.02][applause] I can say that personally, when I took over as the team lead this year, my goal was just to make it to district championships. The fact that our first year ever there, we came in second place, is just astounding to me. So, thank you all, team members. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Angelakis and the rest of the school board for your extended support, helping us both financially and just with logistics, because it was such a wonderful opportunity for everyone that we couldn't have had without your help. So, thank you. And I look forward to next season and what we come up with.[978.86][978.86][applause]
Could I just ask a question? How many will be returning to Swampscott High School next year? Or how many... Let's do it this way. How many are graduating from the Robotics Team this year?
Two or three.
Three of you? And so now, let's see how many of you will be returning? Bringing home a world championship potentially? Yay, that's great. We want a picture of all of you. So, if you could come down and stand over there.
So, I have another question. Of the... Of those of you... Of those of you who are graduating, are you... Is this a part of your college studies, do you think? Is this going to play a factor in what you're doing next year or where you decided to go?
Who's going into STEM or engineering or...
Next year, I'm going to Framingham State University, and I'm majoring in computer science. So, I think this whole opportunity, the whole competition throughout my four years, that's just been a huge benefit to me. And definitely, it looked really good on my resume to show schools that I'm a part of this, and I'm just so happy that we got this.
That's great.
Andrew, where are you going?
I'm going to Webber's. I'm going to be taking mechanical engineering. And I can say that taking this club has really shaped, like, how I interact with others. And I'm, like, really proud, because the first three years I came to this team, everyone was, like, very cooperative. And it's my goal to make everyone have a part in the team. And I'm glad to say we achieved that and are looking forward to implementing what culture we've got from this in my future in college.
All right, come on down. We want to get a photo. This is awesome. This is so cool.
And he's standing next to Hugh, who was one of yours.
He was there too.
Cornell Brady.
Hugh was there too. You're right. So, awesome. I can't recognize you from the crowd. How's that possible? What do you guys want to say? You have to say something.
411.
4311.
4311. Oh, wait, wait.
That's awesome. Good job, guys. Awesome.
Can you change that back?
Why? Because whatever that is.
Tyrion with no nose and...
That's me.
I just... I know they're going to head out, so...
I didn't mean to make it sound like...
All right, so, we're going to move on to community announcements. We're going to move on... We're going to move on to community announcements. I know, it's hard. There's so... Not little anymore. Especially after having Ms. Delicio's group in. It's amazing to see.
From one extreme to the other, yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting. Suzanne, would you like to start with community announcements?
Can you do comments? I'm excited for tomorrow's senior project presentations. I love that day, but I don't really have anything else to say.
I just, on a personal note, wanted to give a shout-out that my daughter Sydney is filming tonight for the TV Studio Club. And then...[1257.33][1257.33][applause] She's not going to stand up. And then, I also just take the opportunity, since we're at the end of the year, to just give a big thank you to Mr. Dulett and all of his TV Studio kids. They supported us all year, another great year. And we appreciate everything that they do.[1274.74][1274.74][applause]
Do you want to add anything or do you...
We had the preschool carnival today, and it was very successful. And I will say, a lot of middle school students volunteered as well to work down there, and it really was great. They get to give back a little bit to the younger students, so that was a lot of fun.
I'm going to save my remarks for the chair update, as it's all related to Town Meeting. So, with that, I'd like to move into our superintendent's report.
And with permission of the chair, I'd like to move up letter C, the SCF grant acknowledgements. We have a couple of guests here with us tonight from SCF, Dave Ritchie and Chris Winters, to share with us about the year. I don't know, at Town Meeting, if you heard that I gave an update on our renewed partnership, because we've worked hard. It falls off the radar, then it comes back on. And this year was... You were incredibly generous to the school department, and we are forever grateful. I think we're over 21,000, but I leave the rest to you guys. Grab that mic and put it on your table, please.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you for saying that. My name is Pam Sedis. Dave Ritchie, I'm the president of the SCF. And I've had the pleasure to be part of this organization for 12 years. And it's been an incredibly rewarding experience. I mean, you see kids like this, and you feel like you're meeting the next Tony Stark. And, no, it's amazing. There's been more than one science fair that I've just handed the kid a business card and said, "You know, when you get out of college, just give me a call." I got to get that kid from Framingham State's contact details. Anyway, a special thank you to Pam. I feel like Pam and I have grown up through this process. I was a parent with children at Stanley. She's always been there for us. This is... You are my third superintendent that I've had the pleasure to work with. And she's always supported our ideas. Some of them were ambitious and a little bit outside the box, from putting trains in the back of Stanley School to building irrigation ditches in Clark School to a weather station on top of the high school. So, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us. The reason I wanted to come here tonight, other than just to report on our progress, is to let you know that next school year will be my last, so I want to start a smooth transition. And we just want to get your help and advice on getting some new blood from the district and to keep what we've been doing now for over 30 years going. And I think you'd be the best people to help us find... I mean, there's not a lot of jobs that you administer that you can get romantic about, but how can you not get romantic about that? So, with your permission, I'd like to follow up with you separately to get your advice on what your ideas are and if you have any suggestions. This is my dear friend, Chris. Chris has a very difficult job. We get a lot of grant submissions. Due to the way that our bylaws are structured, we can't support everything, even though we want to. And as you can imagine, when we support things, it's great. And when we don't, you ultimately get pushback, which is completely reasonable. But he wants to report on our year. We've had a fantastic year, and Chris is going to talk you through it.
Sure, yeah. Thanks, Dave. So, you know, maybe just to frame before kind of going through what was funded, as Dave mentioned, we do have, you know, a specified mission and mandate. And that really guides what we do in terms of the choices made on the grants to fund. And so, just a reminder that really our mission is to fund projects that enhance and enrich curriculum and beyond the normal scope of what would be funded publicly. So, that's sort of a guiding light for us. And that includes student-centered projects, as well as professional development grants for our teachers. And those are two flavors. So, not to waste too much time here, I just want to report that we were able to fund $21,365 worth of grants. That's... We're six grants in total there. And just to provide a little bit more flavor, we were very excited to be able to work collaboratively with Randy Wilbur, Michelle Janofsky, and others to put together this grant for the Joe Trebendus Weather and Climate Center at Swampscott High School. And we have the first weather STEM unit in the state, at a high school in the state, that's now on top of the high school. This is an opportunity. It's both the instrumentation, it's a database, data analytics are involved. And we've already had kids coming up to us excited, and we're following it on Twitter, as you should too. So, very excited about that. I think it has the... It really provides the opportunity for multidisciplinary learning with that unit. Other grants that we funded were two professional development grants for Joe in particular. And Joe, as always, is one of our... The best grant writers that we get, always on point with his grants and doing so much for this school. Excited to support his work and also professional development. Another one for Aaron Grockie. We supported a composting and recycling... The implementation of a composting and recycling program for Swampscott Middle School that is a joint... Was a joint project put together by students and teachers that combines developing a better understanding of sustainability, as well as understanding sort of the environmental component of recycling and enriching soil. We then also funded what's called the Zen Garden at Swampscott High School. And this was... Is a project, again, multidisciplinary in nature, combining the art history course, the geometry course, as well as the green scholars, in a design challenge to develop a space in the... Out here at the high school that's intended for, really, a place of reflection and a place for kids to kind of take a break. And really, though, combining some excellent design there. Finally, we were able to fund what's called the Elementary Greenscreen Project for the elementary schools, which really is outfitting the elementary schools to provide them with the capability to do video-based presentations, in particular of the third and fourth grade research projects that are done through the libraries. And we're excited about that. I think that provides an additional way for the kids to be able to express and convey their research. We have some others to go through, and I'd be happy to do that, but in the interest of time. Now, we... I think one of the things that we want to get across is the collaborative nature with which we'd like to move forward in helping develop and fund grants and not put it all on the teachers to do so and deliver a fully baked cake. So, we're happy to, for example, work with a teacher who has an idea and make sure that we're... We can fund it from the beginning, based on bylaws, our mission, our mandate, and then really develop it into something that's fundable. And we like to do that. I think it's really important that we get more grants coming in from the elementary school. And we'd love to have, as Dave mentioned, I think, more involvement on the board for some of the younger students. And we appreciate all the help, all the support also from Pam and from the committee.
Yeah, I just want to say a few more things. The other... The other thing that I wanna make sure that we recognize is that these teachers have to put in an enormous amount of energy, probably on their own time, to come up with these ideas. And I will tell you that in the years that I've been doing this, we've seen some pretty fantastic ideas. The other interesting trend that I would say we've started to see over the last three years is that kids are applying for grants. And it's not every day that you have a kid come up to you and ask for five grand to build a killer robot, right? And so, it'll be interesting to see, as the years progress, how the student body gets more engaged with our organization to fund ideas that they would like to do, that are still in alignment with our mission, and have the blessing of Pam. But, I mean, that's a relatively new phenomenon.
Absolutely, yeah. I think as much engagement as we can with the teachers and the students to help craft and develop grants.
One thing I'd like to add is that with this For the Love of Learning segment that we have at our last meeting, both Joe presented to us, and the composting club did. So, they educated us phenomenally about their mission, what their vision is for the club, and Joe did a great job. We were all like jaw-dropping on what he presented at the conference. So, it's all circling back to us as well, which is really, is wonderful.
Well, I'll take it a step further. The composting club presented last night to town meeting. And it was a group of kids who had a, one of the better visions, plans, and then executions of any kids, and some adults, that I've seen. It was pretty amazing. And they really, I think they really made an impact on the town. So, you know, it's, it goes, what you got, the generosity of the Swampscott Education Foundation really moves beyond just what's happening within the schools. I think it's fair to say that the whole town was very impressed, and there were a number of things on our town warrant last night that were, you know, related. We had a straw ban, and it passed without question. And I'm not sure if it necessarily would, without having seen these kids really leading the way. So, it's a leadership, a level of leadership that really is amazing. I wanna say to you, thank you very much for all of your leadership.
My pleasure.
I, you know, we know each other in a number of different ways, but I am always struck by your generosity of time and of spirit and of money. And I know that there have been times when it didn't wind up on the sheet, but you still were generous enough to make your own donation to help some of these things happen. So, we really appreciate your, the philanthropist that you are, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also going to ask the chair to take letter B out of order, so that I can recognize some teachers from our district who will be leaving us. The first person I'd like to recognize is Irene Dalton, who has been with us for 23 years. Irene has been a mainstay in this community, both in and out of the classroom, for over 40 years. After graduating from Boston College in 1970, and teaching in Brockton for five years, she started working at the Stanley School in 1975. In 1980, Irene decided to stay home to raise her three girls for 11 years before getting back into education by teaching preschool at St. John's in Swampscott. Irene went back to school to get her master's degree from Wesley University, and started teaching at Swampscott Middle School in 1997. As a 6th grade English language arts teacher, she is flat-out exceptional. As a colleague, she possesses infinite insight, poise, and a collaborative spirit that have served our Swampscott teaching community very well. Four decades as a pillar in the community is a long time for countless students, colleagues, parents, and other members of our town to reap the benefits that Irene has delivered. Whether it be her unlimited kindness, her naturally bright demeanor, her forever generous nature, or her sneaky sense of humor, she has left a mark that will never disappear from the hearts and minds of those who had, have, who have had the fortune of spending time with her. We want to wish Irene the absolute best in her years to come, as she further devotes herself to the people and endeavors in her life that she so deeply loves, including her grandchildren, who call her Beanie, and her passion for baking, golf, and travel. Thank you for everything. Come on up.
Let's get in the picture. Wait, wait, picture.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Irene Dalton. I grew up in Swampscott, I was educated at the Stanley School. I remember my father saying to me, if any of you remember Sheila Carney, my father said to me when I went into her 5th grade classroom, "I've never seen such a pretty young teacher in my whole life." So, I go back a long time in the community. I was raised here, I was graduated from Swampscott High School. My daughters attended Swampscott High School. They all went to Boston College, as did I and my husband, Peter. I can't tell you what a joy it has been to teach. I love, love, love what I do. And if anyone had said to me last year that I would be retiring this year, I would've said they were crazy. But it has been an absolute pleasure. Thank you for everything, to all of you. And it's especially wonderful to see the kids grow up, the kids that I've had. I just saw the Trebendus girls outside, and I will be taking them on their first college tour this summer, to, of course, Boston College. Anyway, thank you so very much.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we celebrate Holly Sheehan, 18 years in Swampscott. For most of this time, she served as an elementary health education teacher at Clark, Hadley, Mashawn, and Stanley Elementary Schools. She also taught 4th grade at Stanley, and most recently, 2nd grade at Hadley. Holly started an elementary health program in Saugus prior to teaching in the district, and was passionate about continuing this work in Swampscott. Holly brings creativity and positive energy to her classroom, and is always finding new ways to make learning fun for her students. Over the years, she has really enjoyed working with students at every elementary grade level, K through 5, and has valued the challenges of each role. Holly is an upbeat and supportive colleague who will be truly missed. She is looking forward to pursuing a new career path in her retirement from teaching. Congratulations, Holly.
I didn't hear about this new career.
I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna say anything, Holly?
No, I wasn't prepared. I just wanna say thank you, my time here was wonderful. I started off in Saugus, well, actually, before that, I started off teaching, not teaching, but in education at Salem State College, where I was an admissions officer. And then I went to Saugus and started their health education program for eight years. And then I came here, and settled here for another 18 years. So, about 30 years in education total. And I loved it, especially loved teaching health education. But my time in the classroom was fun as well. And now, yeah, I'm thinking of new endeavors. But I do thank you very much, and thank you very much for your support.
Congratulations. We have one other retiree who is unable to attend, and that is Kenneth Buck Harris, who served the district in Swampscott High School for 23 years. Coming from private industry to the high school, he dedicated his teaching career to not only the academic welfare of students, but to their social-emotional well-being. His passion for teaching students' awareness of their mental, physical, and emotional growth was quite evident in the curriculum he developed. Buck contributed not only in the classroom, but in many leadership roles. He was a motivating factor for the success of the high school's Peer Leaders-Mentors Program, as well as the Anti-Defamation League influence. These groups are crucial to developing a positive school climate and to giving students voices in the school. The programs are very well-received, and participation by students is at an all-time high. This is a credit to his influence and leadership. His influence on school and student achievement has been another passion for Mr. Harris. As part of the professional learning circles, he participated in book circles with colleagues to enhance his knowledge of students. An example of his support for students in the school was his participation in the first senior project. He supervised and advised students on a restoration project, combining his love for sailing and his skill as a carpenter. Finally, Mr. Harris's greatest contributions that will be his legacy is co-authoring a biography of Derek Sheckman, who was an outstanding student who lost his life to cancer. The book chronicled Derek's battle with the disease in his own words. Since his publication, Mr. Harris established grief groups for those students who lost family or friends and are struggling with their grief. The book is now part of the SHS Health Curriculum, and will continue to be a focus when discussing the grief process. On a personal note, Mr. Murphy stated, "I feel honored having the opportunity to work with such a passionate, inspiring educator." Mr. Harris always thought about the welfare of his students first, and worked tirelessly to support their efforts to grow as human beings. We wish Mr. Harris the very best in all his endeavors in the future. Congratulations, Mr. Harris. And now, I'd like to return to the top of my superintendent's report, which is the last item in your folder, because I did not add a number to it. So, it is in your drive. So, at one of the last meetings, I updated you on the assistant principal hiring and posting at the high school, and the fact that we had gone through a very detailed process, the typical process we go through, we had two finalists, and both had declined. And so, at that, at the last meeting, I talked to you about holding off on any postings and reevaluating where we were at, and we have taken the time to do so. And between the last meeting and today, I'm pleased to announce that I'm naming the current dean of students, Mrs. Colleen Cullfinn, as the new assistant principal at Swampscott High School, beginning July 1st. Colleen demonstrates the leadership skills of an assistant principal, and will be a great mentor to any new dean who fills her current position. She's student-centered, has great relationships with both students and staff. She's a hard worker and puts in long hours. So, there is a posting that will be put up probably by week's end for a new dean of students at the high school. Update on the Clark School principal search. The posting for this position closes next Tuesday. We currently have 25 applicants, very diverse, very varied group of candidates. Mrs. Raymond and I have gone through the group of candidates, and it's interesting that it's a different group, a much more robust group of applicants, from when we went through the applicants for the Stanley School principalship. So, time, having taken that time off, has really, and I don't think, being a blue-ribbon school district has hurt, but 25 applicants, I would say the majority of which have strong potential. So, we've already sent a communication to parents, staff, and administrators, and we've invited them to apply or volunteer to be part of the interview committee. I have asked Latonya Mackey-Nolles to lead this team, this interview process. She has been through a number of processes with us. She has experience as a vice assistant principal at the high school. She is part of my central office team, and so she will be leading the process once the posting closes, and that's on May 28th, so. The next item on my agenda is the budget decisions for FY '20 at the high school. I think there is some misinformation that has been put out there regarding the budget decisions, so I just wanna take a minute to clarify these decisions. There is a high school teacher that is not returning next year, but that is due to a resignation. The science teacher resigned a couple of months ago to go and work for a nonprofit. So, that was not one of the budget decisions, but a decision that this individual had made. As Mrs. Maltz had spoken about, the high school library media position was eliminated, and I wanna reiterate that it was the position and not the person. One of the reasons is that that position is furthest from the classroom. It is not set up as a scheduled special as it is at the elementary and middle schools. The model is entirely different. And when we went through the library media specialist reductions about seven or eight years ago, at the time, it was a requirement at the high school for the NIASC accreditation. It is no longer required. They have gone from seven standards that they rate schools on to five. And the standard that relates to high school libraries at this point is that they be available as resources for students and staff. And so, the staffing of that library to make it available to students and staff will be discussed at the high school level, in the high school administration. In addition to that, there was a high school, another high school science teacher who was reduced from full-time, which we call a 1.0 FTE, to a .6 FTE. And this was simply due, as I was saying at town meeting the other night, to caseload and class sizes. If there, if a teacher does not have a caseload of classes that fills a full-time schedule, we can't continue to maintain a full-time position. And then the final one is along the similar vein. It is a .6 high school English teacher, again, who is due to caseload and class sizes. So, those are the budget decisions that were made at the leadership team level, with the involvement of the high school administration, actually, at the recommendation of the high school administration. And so, I just wanted to clarify who exactly was impacted by their budget decisions.
But there was another teacher that increased as well, right?
So, yes, one of the English teachers, as a result of the .6 teacher being eliminated, that position was increased to a 1.0. So, that, we're really losing...
Like .2.
Right, less of an FTE. But what it came down to is really, for the first time this year, as we did with the elementary level last year, and we said we were gonna do this at the high school level, is really start to look at caseloads of faculty and staff, of direct services to students. And if students aren't being directly serviced every period of every day that's required by contract, we can't continue to maintain full-time positions.
So, what does programming look like?
Programming hasn't been impacted. And that was what I said Monday night. And I'm pretty proud of what we were able to do, is that programming and services to students. Mrs. Maltz's model at the middle school is entirely different than it is at the high school. And the other thing I wanna emphasize is that this is about the position and not the person in the position. So, the person in that position is being offered to remain within the district. So, there's a lot of adult decisions that get made, and they're not easy decisions, but they doesn't, it doesn't, our decisions didn't impact programming or services, as I said Monday night, that would impact being a big, blue-ribbon school.
Is there, is there talk about a committee or something to sort of think about the library-media space, and how it can be re-envisioned a little bit and utilized?
There is an informal committee right now. A lot of people have a lot of opinions and a lot of interest, how the kids will be able to access it. I would recommend that the administration expand that committee to involve people outside of the school.
It'd be interesting to see what other, what other communities are doing in the same situation.
They have some data on that.
And from someone who's been visiting so many colleges, to see how those libraries are being used so differently than, you know, five, 10, 20 years ago.
So, the library's not going away. It's being reinvented, and while that's happening, that position is being eliminated this year.
So, I just wanna add to this, a little bit out of the ordinary. I've been talking to Max McDonough over the past couple of days, and I know that there have been some questions that some students have had, with some particular concerns. We, I invited him to come tonight, and said that I would open up, he's representing some other people as well, and thought that if there were the... people as well, and thought that if there were the opportunity, after having heard what you've heard, if you'd like to ask some questions, I would then entertain a motion to...
Invite them down here?
What?
Invite them down here?
I'd invite them to come and sit, and we could have a conversation about this if that is something that you're interested in. Okay. So I'm going to entertain a motion to, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just saw Joe with the...
Oh, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, to, I won't be official about this, to...
I don't think we need to open...
Open discussion? Yeah, we have to entertain a motion to go into open discussion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Yeah.
You can come down, right here.
Why don't you guys come down to the front? So I want to, this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past where we have had back in... Are you a part of this group as well? Do you want to come down?
Sure.
Yep, why don't you guys come sit right here. Mr. Dulett's going to give you a microphone. So just as a point of order, I want to say that back in, I think it was February, we went into a public... Say that again?
A hearing?
That we went, sorry, we went into a public hearing to discuss very specifically the details of the budget. And that's kind of a standard. This is a little bit out of standard, but I appreciate the fact that you guys, and particularly you, Max, have really been advocating and working with the school leadership, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Cohut. So, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask some questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sure...
Let me just interrupt for a minute. I also want to make sure, we did talk about it before, but I want to make sure that we keep this too, very specifically about positions and not specific people.
Can you just introduce yourself a little bit?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so I'm Maxwell McDonough. I am a sophomore at Swampscott High School.
And on the robotics team.
Yeah.
I'm Alexander McDonough. I'm his brother. I'm also a sophomore.
Excellent.
Okay, so over the past few weeks, a lot of students at the high school have come to be informed of the layoffs at the high school. I'd say many, many students are concerned about these layoffs. I guess since February or so, you all have been discussing this. And I'd say we probably should have paid more attention to this. We'll definitely be keeping a closer watch on school committee events, just...
Too many of us came as rather a shock because it seemed like suddenly all these people were leaving, all these changes were happening, and we weren't really sure what was happening and how it would affect us.
Did, but you have, and I'm sort of filling in information here that I've, between what we've been discussing. Have you found the leadership at the high school to be receptive to listening to you and working through some of this information?
Very much so. They were always happy to meet with us, answered all our questions, just exceptional, really. And you yourself, especially Superintendent Angelakis, have answered just a lot of the questions we already had and just really, like, very transparent, just a great job.
I just want to say, I want you to continue, Max, but I just want to say, if you ever have any questions, you did the proper thing by going to your administration first. But my door, do nothing bring me more joy than for kids to try to meet with me. I would be happy to meet with you on any topic after you've gone through your high school administration. That's the proper channels we send anybody through. So I'm happy you're here tonight, and I'm happy you're voicing your opinions, and I'm happy you're learning about what the process is for budget. And so when next year comes around, you guys have two more years. I hope you'll come to the meetings and become informed and then ask questions. But I don't want you to be interrupted, Max. I don't know if you had anything else to say.
Yeah, he finished what I was going to say. That, I think we have a couple more questions, though.
Yes, just, as you said, an informal committee is discussing, the library is perhaps my biggest concern, and just what will happen to it. And you said there's an informal committee, and we're certainly, we're very interested in to see what that informal committee, if it becomes formal, what they will have to say and the plan for that.
I think you should try to get on that as well. I think there should be student representatives on that committee.
I agree.
So I think that's a great place for you to...
A library media center is the hub of a school. The way it's been utilized up to now is not to its fullest potential. And so in order to figure out how to do that, that space isn't going away. You know, we have to figure out how best to utilize that and how best to staff that. And I will send an email after this meeting and share with the administration that when they're doing committee, you know, community members, parents, students should be involved. I think you have a very strong student advisory to, or school council to the administration, but your voices need to be heard. You have a couple more years here or so.
Yes, so thank you for clearing up the subject of the library because that was something we had several questions about. So it's good to hear that we have a plan for that.
And did you have the misinformation about the science teacher that chose to leave?
No.
No, we heard that he was, we understood that it was his choice.
Yeah, we had a meeting, I think, very, very soon after we heard about what was happening with the administration, and they cleared up most of it.
One of the things that Max and I talked about was the potential for the school committee to come and visit at the high school next year during the budget process and explain a little bit about the process itself. I told him that we'd make ourselves available. Also, they're not here with us tonight since they're just getting ready to graduate, but we have, we do have two representatives from the school who are always on our school committee. I'll be candid, I don't know how they wind up as part of our team.
It's part of their principal's advisory of student representatives, and they're selected, I think they're president and vice president, and they become student reps on the school committee, but...
That might be something that you want to look into.
And I guess that's an incorrect assumption of mine. I felt like if they were here and they were very, very engaged this year, they're really participatory in this process, that they might have related back to the school. So we didn't know it was a surprise to you. So for that, you know, I apologize.
We could definitely, yeah, try something new next year. Is there a political action club here still?
No, that was, well, there was this year, but it was run by seniors, and I do not think there is a plan to continue it after they graduate.
You guys are in the perfect position.
Okay, you need to bring that to administrative, administrators' attention.
Okay.
That it's important to you.
Yes.
And that you want to look for somebody to advise it.
Yes, so...
Yes, I understand, it was my understanding from the meeting with the principal, the class sizes in both English and science are expected to increase to about 20 to 24 students. We're just wondering if, do you think that will have quite a significant impact? Does it?
According to the high school administration, no. I didn't get the number of 24. They would increase to the low 20s is what I was told, and they didn't think it was going to impact what was going on in the classrooms. Because we're really only losing, we're losing less...
Less than a half a...
Right. So they did not think it was of concern in the English classes. Again, you know, every year, we look at what the decisions we've made, and we look at student achievement, and we look at, is it impacting the way that we're doing things? And we reassess. And I have the confidence in the teachers that are in place, that things will be fine. But if at any point the administration says, you know, this isn't working, if the kids say, you know, I'm having trouble in this class, I feel like it's too large, we listen to those things. So when we make decisions, they're not always a done deal forever. They're a done deal for now.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying on the library position and like all the other positions because we will certainly convey that to the students at the high school.
Just, yeah, just one last thing. So the plan for what, a comprehensive plan for the library and how that space will be used, how it will be run, will that be in place by the time? Is that on track to be a full, is that on track to essentially?
For September?
For September, yes, for the next four years.
I don't have the answer to that, but I can certainly find out. Let me go back and do a little digging and then have them communicate that to you guys.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to thank you guys both for your leadership. It's really nice to see you guys involved and concerned.
Especially at such a young age. You have the ability and you're in the position to have a great impact at this high school in the next couple of years. So good for you. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you guys for letting that happen.
It's awesome. It's like a great way to have a dialogue.
Yeah. The next item on my superintendent's report is the Mass Association for School Committee, Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents Joint Conference. Every year in November, this comes up, and every year whoever's chair and I try to attend this conference, and we haven't been successful. Well, now I have put us in a position where we're going to have to attend because Latonya Mackey and I have submitted two proposals for two breakout sessions to present. And so one of them is called Thanks for the Feedback: Using Google Forms to Quickly Solicit Feedback and Generate Data. And the other is Leveraging Technology for Collaborative and Effective Meetings. If one or both of our proposals are accepted, we are looking for at least two school committee members to join us at the conference. So that is November 6th through November 9th in Hyannis.
Can I just pencil it in my calendar?
Yes, please.
I will go too. Can three people go?
Well, two or three. Yeah, they can all go. It's really, our district has not been, outside of the Superintendent's Executive Institute that I go to in the summer, this is one of the most important conferences. And inevitably, some things come up that it just hasn't worked out. And I'll be quite frank that personally, it has been a childcare issue for me that it could no longer interrupt. And I think that this is amazing, but what Ms. Mackey Knowles has shared with me is that, and she convinced me, is that she's worked with a lot of superintendents, and we all know she worked with Desi, and she said, "You don't understand how advanced our district is and how well we're doing with technology. You need to stand up and talk about it." So we're excited. Well, even if we don't get accepted, which I think we will, I do think it's important that we start planning now to attend this conference.
Again, what was the date?
November 6th through November 9th, and it's in Hyannis. The next item on my superintendent's report is something that I'd like to share with you. So this is Mrs. Maltz's creation with, is it Monica Bear? Yep. And Ms. Poverchuk was showing me, but this is another way or another example of the middle school thinking outside the box. So it, you know, I'm going to go to Mrs. Maltz's message, actually. So if you go to the website, they have come up with a suggested summer reading list. And in order to encourage children to read, they have created, let me go back. They have created things in Google. Dear parents, your child has worked very hard this year. According to research, students who do not read over the summer can lose as much as 20%, 22% of their reading level. That means two months of school down the drain. So here's to making summer reading. They're encouraging children to read, try to read something every day. This is so different that it's not, these are the books for fifth grade that you have to read. These are the books for sixth grade that you have to read. They give suggestions, they sign off on it, and then there's these little stickers or stars that I loved. And I'll have you guys chime in for whatever I missed. But the best part of this is they have created an Instagram account. And they're encouraging children to use social media to post about their books and their reading. For example, here's a little Post-it note. If you like the Quidditch scenes of Harry Potter and want to learn more, you will enjoy this book. So I couldn't resist, I just told Natalie, Sandy, I didn't get to say it to you, that I was in my office tonight and created an SPS Super account so that I could comment on the posts that the kids have. So here I said, are the two books related? Because Brave kept coming up as the most popular book, or are they independent of each other? And then I commented on this one as well. And I love that it's in a whole. So I just think this is another example of how the middle school is trying to hook our kids in different ways, between the wind block, between this and as an FYI, school improvement plans will be revisited on June 26th. We have given them the heads up and the progress that they've made. But I am going to, without any preparation, Sandy and Natalie, would you like to add anything?
Hold on, hold on one second. I just want to make sure that they can hear you at home.
Joe's going to give you a...
We're creating a Google form that the elderly's going to work on so that the kids don't directly have to go into social media. So parents don't have to worry about that. And we will post it on Instagram, and we also have a Twitter account. I hope that some families, parents might...
They're not at that age, they're not on it themselves, right?
I just wanted to assure parents watching this that they don't get to let their kids into social media. The other thing is that I got a class today called How to Choose a Fun Book. And so I unveiled to them this idea that they're going to choose their own book. And we talked about that. And especially for the kids who have a harder time choosing a book, I asked them how they felt about it. And they were mostly optimistic. They said it might be a little scary choosing the book still, but they liked the idea that they did have choice, that so, and we're going to hope that this works for them. So thanks.
I just think it's another out-of-the-box idea that is needed for that daunted summer reading task for both parents and students. As a parent, you know, it's August, the second week in August, and you're asking if the child has completed their summer reading because you've been hounding them all summer, and inevitably, you're scrambling the last week of summer to get the reading done. This idea of, and my own child has said to me, "I like reading what I like to read. I don't like it when somebody tells me what to read." So this idea of giving them choice in literature, and certainly after your scavenger hunt of the genres in there, I think you've built up excitement, and I think this is a really great idea, and I wish you all the best and success, and I hope the kids really grab onto it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish this camp were in the library.
Yeah, right.
So the final item on my agenda is something that came across my desk today from the governor's office. They're launching a public awareness campaign called Respectfully. It is about promoting healthy relationships among middle and high schoolers. It's actually launching next week, May 26th, and it is to increase awareness of what constitutes a healthy relationship. It emphasizes the need for respect in relationships and helps teens identify the escalating behaviors that may lead to unhealthy and unsafe relationships. So if you go to their website, which I've given you a link, there are short videos and modern animations via social media platforms. It's directed at youth between the ages of 12 and 18, as well as their parents and caregivers. I bring this to you because the message we got from Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito today was that we will be asking school committees to adopt a resolution to become a respectfully community, and we want your support in adopting the measure. So if you go to their website, it's actually very cute. How can I help my friend? You click on the link. You come down to, there's no animation there. There was on the first one, let's go back. You click on this link, what is a healthy relationship? It gives you written text, and then...
Hey, I need to talk to you. What's up? Why were you making fun of Tim? I wasn't. Come on, the whole class heard you.
Oh, Matt, I was just joking.
Yeah, well, it wasn't funny.
Aw, man, I wasn't trying to be mean. I gotta go talk to him.
Okay, see you later. Respect everyone fully. Visit mass.gov/respectfully to learn more.
So as I said...
Some adults that could use this.
Yes, I just bring it to you because they will be asking you to adopt a resolution. And I think that goes in line with everything that we stand for in this district and every social, emotional goal we have.
Just out of curiosity, is there a venue for showing middle schoolers and high schoolers this?
I think we will find the time. As I said, it just came across my desk today. It says there are materials from Massachusetts Health Promotion Clearinghouse, provided free of charge. So we'll have to figure out how to weave that in.
Listen about the message at the district attorney's, you know, where he talked about stay in the room?
stay in the room?
Yes.
And I think, I just wanted to mention, I thought what Peter did at town meeting, just talking about how not only-
Civility.
Respectful in person, but maintaining the civility, especially, um, on social media and how critical and important it is. So it sounds like that message is coming from everybody, which is great.
His slide was powerful Monday night. It, and we've all experienced it.
Well, the whole, you know, having difficult conversations and not agreeing with stuff and needing to find compromise, and especially in this day and age, right? Like staying in the room.
Stay in the room.
Is really important, right?
Right.
And maintaining that civility is critical. Having that, those hard conversations, I completely one hundred percent agree. Maybe my kids will watch it.
So, so I think, um, if, uh, you said that you have sent us the, the link, or it's in the, um, it's in our-
It's in my superintendent's report.
Okay. So, you know, I think we, um, we should all take a look at this, um, and especially as we are, uh, Governor Baker's hometown, uh, make an, an effort to, um, to weave this into what we do. Um, so perhaps we can, uh, set some, you know, be a standard setter here as well.
Is the resolution coming or is it already out?
No, it's, it's coming. I, I, I don't, they haven't asked anything of districts.
Okay.
I just got the communication. I thought that it was very timely to share with you what's coming out, what they're doing, and explore the website a little bit.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, letter D under my superintendent's report is the college acceptance list. I'm not going to read through this. Um, we are all aware of how wonderful a year we've had and how fortunate our students have been with the hard work of the teachers and the guidance staff and with Mrs. Barnum's presentation here about the process for colleges and the college acceptances. But, um, if you look at the total, there are five hundred and seventy-nine college acceptances, which is great. And you look at the schools and what schools they're getting into. But we've had this discussion when we review this list every year, that there's the right fit for everybody. And, um, even though a child is accepted into what somebody else might consider a prestigious college, you have to think about financial packages, you have to think about family dynamics and what works for the family. But we were celebrating very early on the colleges our kids got into this year. And so, um, I just share with you the details of that information.
The, the thing that struck me about that list was, um, the diversity. There's colleges on here that I haven't seen kids in this district apply to in forever, maybe. But also, there's so many colleges on there that are in the list, the list of like forty schools that make a difference in your life, like really alternative sort of places that are really just cool, different kinds of environments. It's really, it was very impressive.
That's what's interesting to me, yeah.
The diversity of, of the schools.
Because I look at that and I think that particular person found the school they wanted. They didn't just go to this, these five schools that everybody applies to. They found what they were looking for.
And I think that speaks a lot to Ms. Barnum and her team and, and all of the leadership at the high school for helping plug these kids into where they're going to thrive.
Right. I agree. And I would say that I know Suzanne and I have, uh, daughters about the same age, but my only limited experience right now is when, when we've sat down and gone through Naviance from her high school, going through it together and trying to figure it out. So the fact that I, I expect that that one-on-one will come next year, but, um, this is quite impressive. And it, 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 it shows that, it supports what Ms. Barnum said about them finding what's right for them.
Right.
And the last item on my superintendent's report is the community service update. Many years ago, you had asked, um, Amy for us to provide, um, kind of community service that's done at each of the schools. It is also in your, um, drive. Um, I, again, this is a multi-page document that I don't want to read through, it's six pages. But what we've done is highlighted the, um, activities at each of the school. Um, we've highlighted fundraising events and what they've donated to, um, where the funds have gone. And it really, um, is an impressive list of each school and what they're doing to celebrate differences and to also help those in need. Um, I don't know if anybody has anything they'd like to talk about within this.
I could add that this, this summer, with our extended school year program, we're having that, a summer buddy.
Oh, yeah.
Program. So we have over thirty, um, students who have volunteered their time to work in the extended school year program with students with disabilities, which I'm really, really excited about. So each of the program will have two students. Um, we think we can get everybody in. We want make, we want everyone to have that opportunity. So I think they'll each at least have a week.
Are they all grades five through eight? Are they scattered or?
We, um, I think we have one or two incoming fifth graders and one or two high school kids, but the most of them are grades five to eight.
Nice.
The volunteers or the students?
The volunteers. Yes, students are age ranges from three until high school.
That's great.
That's really-
But we are, it's not really great to have that many kids. And they had to write an essay. They had to get a recommendation from a teacher and they had to come to a meeting. They all did that and completed those requirements, so.
Thirty. That's amazing.
Yeah, it's really exciting. So Mary Powers will be in charge of that group. Um, our theme this summer is going to be Swamp Scott and our community. And so we're really excited for the summer program.
Um, are there, uh, are there, is there a good representation of boys for the volunteers?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Very equal representation, absolutely.
I'm really happy to hear that.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report.
Um, so for my chair report, uh, it's not going to be, uh, news to anybody sitting at this table, but I want to make sure to thank, um, our town, uh, especially, uh, town meeting and, uh, our colleagues on the Board of Selectmen and, uh, Sean Fitzgerald and his team, uh, for passing our budget, uh, for, um, including all of our requests, uh, for the capital improvements plan. Um, I, I, I know that we've said this a few times throughout the last few months, but I am really, um, a, a, as we walked out of town meeting last night, and that was my sixth town meeting, um, I think it was my sixth or my six years in town meeting, um, and all of them as a, uh, as a school committee member. I, I felt a, a real change in sort of the, the, what I saw as the end of, of the year and all of the work that we had done. Um, and I, it really, you know, in reflection, it really was so very different than what we've gone through in the past. Um, and I, I'm proud of, uh, you superintendent and your team for, um, answering all of the questions that the finance committee and the selectmen put before you, uh, with, uh, with complete transparency because after all, there's nothing that we're hiding. Um, I think, I want to commend you and all of the, the, your, you know, what, what we come in and, and what we're looking for in a, in a special education director, you know. So I think everybody thinks of it so very much about the children and obviously that's your focus, but your, um, your, uh, financial acumen has brought so much to the table. And I think that has, that has strengthened us, um, standing before finance committee, uh, and being grilled specifically about your budget and, and what the over-under was, uh, and your ability to stand behind those numbers so strongly, um, makes me, uh, feel really proud of the work that, um, that this group has done. So I, um, I was very happy that, uh, it all was approved last night.
Including the two twenty-five as well.
Including the two twenty-five that we, uh, that you have so strongly advocated for. Um, you know, that was critical.
It was, it was amazing.
So I want to thank the town very, very clearly. Um, and I want to thank everybody who worked on that. Uh, as a side, we had a, um, our sub, our, our tri-chair meeting was postponed because the two other chairs could not make it. Uh, and that's happening this Friday.
Unrelated, can I just, um, mention that I thought that Mr. Burke did an excellent job presenting on the, um, for the school building committee on the new project. And I thought, I thought that was an excellent presentation and, um, hopefully everybody else took away a lot of information from it.
Well, I don't know if he's watching tonight, but I know Bill Demento, who is not very happy about many things that went on at the meeting last night, was sitting behind us and he was very pleased about that, that presentation and thought it was very well done. So I hope I'm not misspeaking for you, Mr. Demento.
A huge thank you to-
Mrs. Wright for working on all that.
Well, I'm Mrs. Porter Roberts and, um, the whole communications subcommittee for the school building committee.
The presentation was great. It was so clear, concise. Um, I think really everybody could walk away with the critical information.
It was great. We had our first rendition. We shouted to the whole building committee, you know, we really talked about it. We really hashed out what, you know, what, what it should look like. And it was really a team effort to sort of, you know, get, get to where that, where it was clear and concise and not a lot of noise. So, that building committee is going to work out. It really is. There's a lot of people doing, working to their strengths.
The number of committee members that have very specific high-level skills were what was missing. Another piece of what was missing, I think, the first time around.
There's good participation too. I mean, for the most part, our meetings have been very well attended.
Mm-hmm.
And, and lots of participation. So, I mean, I'm, I'm encouraged by that.
Sure.
Well, and the Board of Selectmen really, I think, set the stage with their, um, their listening tour, uh, last, uh, early in the winter, that then the school building committee did and now the harbor, uh, the harbor plan is doing. So it's nice to see that happening throughout the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so with that, I don't know if there's more that you want to add, Suzanne?
Well, the presentation, the presentation is up on the website. So, um, you can watch, if you weren't at town meeting or you didn't see it live, you can watch the presentation. Um, and then we're in the process of hiring the owner's project manager. We had, um, Martha Seibert heads, heads up that owner's project manager selection team. There's seven of us. And I think we put on, we, we submitted our, all our paperwork to start getting RFSs in from people. And, um, I think, I think we have quite a bit of interest. And, uh, we had a site information visit last Tuesday, which means people that were potentially interested in this project came to Hadley School to ask some questions and look around. And we had, um, you know, more than a dozen people there, some OPMs, some architects. So that was great. I think we, I think we did a really nice job, actually. I think, I think they all walked away, you know, really understanding our project. So I thought that was great. So now we just have to get through this process and, and, um, the MSBA will vote on our selection in the beginning of August.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we're at timeline-wise.
All right. If anybody doesn't have anything else to add, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Designed to expedite the handling of routine and miscellaneous business of the district, school committee can adopt the entire consent agenda with one motion. At the request of any committee member, any items can be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Tonight we have, uh, regular session minutes from May eighth, executive session minutes from May eighth. Uh, and then we have some donations to the robotics team, um, from Advanced Vision Center, Gregorio Di Costanzo, Brigida Iacono, Jill Jacobson, and Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Palaski. Uh, and finally, we have warrant number nineteen forty-six that I have here that I'm going to need some signatures on. Um, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Um, is there any discussion?
Just a big thank you to all of those generous donations.
Uh, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, and now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned. Eight twenty.